We're gonna bring this meeting to order.
So, Paul. Mayor Thomas. Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Godling. Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Connelly.
Here.
Councilmember Mercer.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith, we have a floor.
Alright, thank you so much. So, we're gonna start. City Manager, Barbara.
Primal of the agenda, and the agenda packet is the Fire Rescue Presentation and Update and a look at capital program. I had no changes to the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please sit down. All opposed? Alright, eyes at it.
Public comment period.
Public comment period. And this is the period where we allow the public to provide any comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment period?
There's no one signed up for public comment.
No one signed up? Let's see that. Okay, no one signed up. But, since we have time, is there anyone who would like to speak? No one? Great. Now, we move into presentation discussion of program for future fire stations.
Mayor Pro Tem and Council.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to give you this update from the fire department. It's a cameo pretty brief presentation. I guess you can make it as long as you want it to be. But, in a nutshell, it's sort of who we are, what we do, if we follow standards. And then, you know, sometimes if you're not quite meeting your standards, what are some of the solutions to meeting standards? And so, we talk about solutions for different areas of the community that have reached some priority considerations. One being the south side for station, the southwest part of the city that's still growing, and perhaps looking at some cooperative agreements there. And then, as we develop in the uptown area, we monitor events to be that view whether or not we're gonna need another, any other units or something. And so, that's in a nutshell, and then I'm gonna just... And the reason we're doing this presentation now is because in January, we're gonna have your planning session, and we're gonna be talking more about capital planning, and we're gonna have some programming for you that relates to how you handle your debt and all the different projects. And you can, you'll have an opportunity just to pick at you what projects you're looking at, funding over the long, over the long term, and bringing forward. And so, we wanted to make sure that you had the background information on this particular project too. I'm gonna turn it over to Fire Chief Eric Griffin, who's gonna make the presentation. Thank Eric in advance for his work on this and for all of his staff.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and good evening, Adam Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to be able to give this presentation. The manager actually gave me really good outline, so I'll start moving right into this presentation. There is a session at the end to answer questions, but if any of you all have questions while I'm going, feel free to interrupt me, and I'll try to do my best to get those answered for you. And if I can't, I got a really good staff from Fire Rescue to help me put this presentation together that hopefully us together will be able to give you a answer to your question. First, we're gonna start with a little bit of the structure of the Fire Rescue Department and what we do. We're an all-hazards department, and that is really a big deal because we pretty much handle any call, any type of call. People call us for not just the Fire Rescue and EMS, but what we do many things, and we'll talk about that later on. We do that out of six stations. We're a paramedic department, we transport at the paramedic level, and we have authorized 161 positions throughout Fire Rescue. This is an organizational chart that shows you how we organize and report to one another throughout the Fire Rescue Department. It is a pretty standard organizational chart, and we feel like it's effective to be able to provide the services throughout the city of Greenville. Looking at three years of data, which the data becomes very important as we move into the future fire station locations. What we want to show here is that the three-year trends and how the calls for service continue to go up. As you can see here in 2016, we're already at six, almost 17,000 calls. And one thing I need to make you aware of, because 2016, the whole year is not done yet, we did some projections of what we believe we will be at, at the end of this year. However, we are far past the 14,850 calls we were at 2015. A very important piece about that data is the fact that 85% of the calls for service is EMS-related. That could be to a motor vehicle crash, or it could be to something as difficult as a cardiac arrest, or even as Councilman Smiley talked about earlier, shootings and accidents that we had over the past weekend. But, those calls continue to grow.
What do you attribute the, I guess, the huge increase of calls to? Is it just more service needed, or...?
The city continues to grow, but I think a lot of times what we do, we based upon our city, upon 90,000 people. And if you look at the medical district, and we'll talk about Station 2 a little bit later on, that area grows in population so high each day, we do all of the emergency transports from doctor's office, nursing homes, wherever the case may be. So, a lot of times, people come to a doctor's office, whether it's a dermatologist or cardiologist, we still do the emergency transport to the hospital. So, those folk either come from other areas surrounding counties or out of the area, and we move them back and forth to the hospital.
Is that something you always did as far as the service, or is that something new?
Now, we always have. We're the only, what we call 911 Emergency Transport Service in the city. You see other private ambulances, but they do not do the 911 transports.
Do you have a sense that... Could some of this be just to the, to a growth in, I guess, business and operational tempos in the medical industry in that area? You probably don't have a me... This is your metric for that, I guess. We can tell when, we can tell when they start doing more business from there because that number goes up, I guess.
Well, what we know is that when you look at things like the VA Hospital, the new nursing home that's on Gregory Downs Road, we see hotspots there. Just real quick, the VA Hospital, it went from being nothing there to basically, we're doing somewhere around about seven transports a day when they're having certain clinics. So, that area is responsible for a large number of our calls.
You mean a large number, the increase of the...
The increase, and overall calls. That is our highest demand area.
VA area.
The hospital medical district area. And we'll refer to that later on in Station 2. Any other questions on that?
Well, I do have some. Does the VA, do you all have a contract with them to do that, or just do it as you always do?
Now, we don't have a contract with them, and we call it the VA Hospital, but really it's the VA Clinic. So, it's no different from the ECU Clinic or any other clinic, anywhere that needs medical service, we will be the responder for that.
But, we do get reimbursed. Those different transports as the federal government allows, and that's part of the funding that goes back into the fund.
Yeah, and just a little clear on that, we say, we're talking about the VA, but we do bill that individual patient, and we get reimbursed either through Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, or, you know, a cash payment to the city.
About $3.41 million a year is what we receive overall in EMS reimbursements.
Alright, we also do fire inspections, and we just want to show that we still, we have no percentage change that. As you all know, I think we sent out some things from notes to council, we're doing company inspections, so we're trying to go into more of the businesses than we went to in the past, so that percentage of inspections are increasing, which is a good thing for us and for the city. One of the other things we do, and a lot of people don't realize it, so we want to bring that up as a public education, we went to 163 events this year, talking to about 20,000 people. And that can be various things of putting up smoke, how to put smoke alarms, anything to how putting car safety seats. We also have a number that we track as our non-emergency services. When the ICMA came in and did analysis of the department, it's one of the things they realized that we were not reporting. And these are, right now, to this, to date this year, spend about 1,300. And that could be anything from someone coming in wanting directions to putting in a car safety seat, to just going out and doing a talk to a few kids about fire prevention and fire safety. But, that does consume some time, and it's a service that there are a lot of citizens throughout the community request from us. So, those are some of the things you see in the city compass sometimes that may not have gotten closed, so those are the numbers right there. Overall, our budget's right around $14 million. And that, that number right there does not include capital. For this year, we've had about 35,000 in capital equipment. That's typically for defibrillators for the EMS units and fire trucks. And we had about 3,000, what, about 384,000 in capital improvements for, one for Station 2 District to make the bay bigger, to put another ambulance out there, and one to do some upfitting at Station 3 for the parking lot. Just real quick, we'll go through for those that's not familiar, what we're talking about, about stations, we'll go through the facilities and resources that we have. The resources are referring to the equipment. So, these, this is the map of the overall city of where the stations are located, and for many years, they've been pretty much located where we would think we can provide optimal service. Typically, it's about three miles apart, with the exception of Station 4, we'll talk about that one.
Of course.
North of the river. So, Station 1, very familiar, right across the street, we've got several units here at Station 1. Keep in mind, we may, we may get questions about personnel. Most of these fire trucks are staffed with three people, the ambulance is staffed with two, and the Tahoe's that you'll see, those are quick response vehicles, normally that's one or two people. For Station 1, we do have to cross-staff the units at the bottom. Station 2 is the medical districts on Henby Lane. It's a typical fire station with two ambulances coming out there and then one fire truck. Station 3 is out on Fatih's Boulevard, that's also just a typical station, and we will talk a lot about Station 3 later on. Station 4 is north of the river, out north of the river, that is, the station's staffed differently. It is a cross-staffed station, but that truck on the right, there is a dual combination unit that works very well for this particular area. Station 5 is off of Rollins Drive, Greenville Boulevard, right across from the Nissan dealership. And Station 6, the newest station, is off of East 10th Street, and that is where the Mercer Operations Center is and our training grounds. So, we're gonna be moving in, talking about station location, it's very important to realize how we go about doing that. We don't just pull it out of thin air, we actually go through a whole analysis and use a standard methodology to try to make sure that we're putting the station where it's gonna be the most effective. Most of any time you see, we're gonna hear us talking about, we're gonna talk about National Fire Protection Association's NFPA 1710. It's a guiding standard and benchmark for fire departments across the nation as well as EMS responses. We're gonna talk a lot about travel time, and travel time from NFPA is four minutes, and we'll talk a lot more about that. Total response time actually contains travel, but it contains a couple of the times that I'll talk about on another slide, but that's typically eight minutes or less, 90% of the time. We also, North Carolina rating response is how we're rated as a fire department until we move over the 100,000 threshold in this city. North Carolina comes in, looks at the department, makes sure that we can do what we say we can do, and what's tied to that is individuals and commercial insurance rates. Right now, we're a Class 3 department, the best you can be is a Class 1, but truthfully, you don't have a lot of financial benefit from a Class 3 to a Class 1. We also have American Heart Standards we've looked at, and Insurance Service Organization, that's the one that goes over 100,000, but we did take that into consideration since we're getting so close to that number here in the city. So, worst-case scenarios is what we gotta try to benchmark off of, and just talking about some of the American Heart Standards. Basically, what this slide is saying, if you can have CPR started within four minutes or less, you have a four, you have basically four times greater chance of survival than if it was started after four minutes. So, the quicker you can start CPR, whether that's by us or by a bystander, your chance of survival is greatly increased.
Let me ask you a question. So, you say four minutes, but then you just said the typical response time, we have eight minutes to get there.
That's total response time, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that in a couple minutes. This is just talking about travel time. So, travel time is the time the wheels on the vehicle start rolling to the time we get to your location. But, there's a couple more pieces to total response time, and I'll talk about it in just a second. This is a slide showing what we call flashover. This typically happens whenever a fire is not brought under, under control. This is a pretty bad situation for not only the residents or occupants of a building, but also for firefighters. And what this slide is showing is a lot of stuff, but I just wanted to bring this up, not to sell residential sprinkler system, smoke alarm, or any of that, but the quicker we're alerted, the quicker a person is alerted, the quicker we get there to try to minimize this. And if you had residential or commercial sprinklers, that is also, that is minimized, and you don't get to this flashover. Basic flashover is that if a fire is burning, at some point in time, all the, all the furnaces in that room will ignite without being touched by the fire. And that happens in a lot of cases. Also, we wanna talk about effective firefighting force. Keep in mind, as I said before, three firefighters on a typical fire truck, two on the ambulance, and our deployment plan, basically, when we go to a typical residential structure fire, which is normally about 1,500 to 1,700 square feet, it takes about 14 to 15 firefighters. And if you have them on three per truck, that's the reason why you see a lot of units going there. And it takes all of those people to do the minimal task. Typically, what we end up having on most of our fires here in the city is about 18 firefighters. We have about, we have a minimum staffing of about 40 firefighters per day. As you see, we are a very busy department, so a structured fire does take away from those available personnel. Alright, I talked a lot about the response times, the four-minute travel time, but what I want to talk about before I break down the whole response time thing is that every community has to decide what their risk's gonna be when it comes to response times. We can, NFPA is a great benchmark, but it's not possible that you're gonna be able to put a station within four minutes of every one of your structures in your city. So, you have to look at a lot of different factors into where you're gonna place your stations and which areas you're gonna take a little more risk. And so, if you are going to be responding to the hospital for a structured fire, you wanna have a fire truck within four minutes. But, if you're gonna be responding to an industrial facility that doesn't have any people in there, no loss of life, you can have a little bit longer response time. And so, every community makes that decision, even though NFPA gives us a standard. This is a concentration map of where all our calls are located. This pointer won't work on this TV, so I'll walk up and just show you. These dark areas basically say where we have a concentration of calls. And as you can see, the hospital medical district, the downtown area, this is where your concentration of calls are. However, as you can see, there's also some on the outer fringes of the city. So, we can't just concentrate on those areas, even though they're very important, all of the areas really become important throughout your whole city. So, having your stations in the correct location is very important. Alright, now, just real quick, let me just break down this response time thing, so hopefully we'll not get too confusing. The chart you see, we're only talking about travel times because this presentation is about station location. But, total response time is actually from the time someone calls 911, that piece is called call processing time, from the time 911 dispatches the fire department, and that is called turnout time. And turnout time lasts from the time we get the call to the time the wheels start moving to the time that we're gonna try to get to with travel time. So, Mayor Pro Tem, we talked about the total response time, and I talked about the eight minutes, that's when all of those units get on scene and are available to provide those services at an ALS level and the effective firefighting force. But, first-arriving unit, the total travel time based upon NFPA is six minutes. That's what they suggest, but as I said, every community has to set that. And that's six minutes 90% of the time. Right now, if you looked at our entire city, our total response time is nine minutes and 17 seconds. There's several things that affect that, so we don't, I don't wanna get too hung up on that being a bad number because in many cases it's not. There are some areas that we're close, we get there quicker, there's some that takes a little bit longer. But, I didn't try to make this chart on total response time because station location is not affected by turnout time nor dispatch time or call processing time. It's only affected by travel time. Alright, so, we did an analysis, and we used two different methodologies to come to this analysis of where the future stations should be here in the city. To put it in a nutshell, we need to be able to be there in a quick amount of time, and if we can cut down the travel time, that is where we're gonna have the most effective response. Well, that's how we're gonna affect our response quickest, if, by cutting down the travel time. So, we took that into, into account, and we talked about time. And really, the things that affect us is the flashover. That, that is a really important piece there for both the, the ops of the building as well as the firefighters. And also, how quickly we provide those emergency medical services. We talk a lot about cardiac arrest, that is a very, that is probably the worst-case scenario, but there are a lot of other emergency medical services that are provided in a quick period of time that will change the outcome of the patient, the patient's outcome. So, the first methodology what we did was we used a risk matrix, and it was based upon all these factors that you see here, and all of that data was put into this matrix to determine where our highest risk was in the city. And so, the biggest ones that, that, that we have up here is the travel time, the calls per day, and also the unit availability. And so, what we found, and also population density, and that's something we'll talk about what is occurring in the Station 1 downtown area. What we found with this particular piece of the, the matrix was the medical district was the highest, mainly because there's so many calls, the density is there, and we know that the unit is, is not available as much because we have so many calls in that area. And so, we took that one piece and we looked at it, and the, the second most busiest was the downtown area, and then the Station 3 area. And we'll talk about how we use this matrix as well as GIS technology to look at where the service areas were, where the gaps in service areas were, where the historical data showed we were going to cause, and we placed both of them into a, in our analysis, and this is how we came up with this, what our recommendations were, we should be concentrating on putting the next station. And so, what we found based upon those two different analysis and methodology types was that the Station 3 area, which is on Charles Boulevard, became the largest area that we could not reach within a four-minute travel time and had the highest calls, calls for service. Station 5, which is out of Rollins Drive, also had an area that was pretty large that we couldn't reach in four minutes, but the calls for service were lower in that particular area. So, what we see from those two priorities right there is by putting a fire station in those areas, we're going to decrease that four-minute travel time and also decrease response times in those areas. Station 1 and Station 2, as I said, in the risk matrix were still pretty high, and I won't come back to these two because I'll, I'll say that Station 2, we've already making changes there. We put an additional ambulance there 24 hours a day, we're extending the station so that we can house both of those ambulances, and we're constantly monitoring what is going on in that area so that if we need to make changes, we can respond to that. Anywhere around that hospital that continues to grow, ECU, we're gonna have calls that's going to increase, and we're gonna keep monitoring that. Station 1, we're definitely monitoring that mainly for population density. This city is, as you all know, is getting ready to go through something that we hadn't been through before. We always grown out, now we're growing up, and as you grow up, you got more people, they're gonna require more services, especially EMS, hopefully not fire because the modern-day construction, putting in sprinkler systems that help us to decrease that thing that we showed earlier with the flashover. So, those areas, they are priorities, but not as high, Station 2 and Station 1.
In Station 3, do they, is that the station that would respond to like Irish Creek?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, today.
That'd be, that's a, that's a haul.
It is. And I'm gonna show, I'm gonna show you what we, what we suggest for that area. And so, work with me just a few minutes because this map is a very good map, but it's a little bit confusing because another agency did it for us and we couldn't replicate it, but it's a very good map. Basically, what the red lines are showing on this map is four-minute travel time from this particular station on Red Banks Road. Don't pay attention to this, we're gonna come back talking about that, we're not, we're gonna talk about that later on, but just a sort of Carolina blue color. I'm a Duke fan, so we should've had that with Dog.
You had to write that.
This red line basically showing where we can get to right now from Station 3 in four minutes in travel time. This is the area that Councilman Connelly was talking about down here in Irish Creek, a long ways away, but keep focusing on this area right here for me as we move forward. So, we put in Station 7 in the lighter area, and this is the station we're gonna be talking about, what, where the city should place its next station, the highest priority from our analysis. And what we see is, is that still, if you look at Station 7 here off of Bayswater Drive is where we're gonna recommend it go, you still from Station 3, you can't get to that , done of that within the four-minute travel time. I'm not for sure if you can see it real well back here, but that's the area that was annexed, the Bill Clark Development, down off of 43, it's still gonna be a long ways out of our four-minute travel district. So, just talking about Station 7, all these black dots are the calls we've had in the last year. 847 calls we've had for service in that area in the last year, and you can see they're all spread out through the different neighborhoods, different commercial complexes they're all about. Most of these were EMS emergency medical calls. Alright, so, that's been a 38% increase from the prior year. So, that area went from when we started planning back in 2009 to having some growth that we were, we were recognizing. We went through the recession, things slowed down, and now we're seeing increases in calls, which that, it's been of a concern of the city, and other cities are gonna be addressing it. So, if you take this area into account, and you look at a four-mile, I'm sorry, a four-minute travel time, if you place the station there at Station, at Bayswater Drive, all of that area now is gonna be within the four-mile, a four-minute travel time. So, that was the highest priority based upon the analysis, the risk matrix, and the GIS analysis of where we were having gaps in coverage. Any questions? Alright, the good part. So, the city back in 2009 purchased land there off of Fatih Road at Bayswater. Commercial complex there that's coming up and starting to have a few additional businesses in there. So, the city has that land, it's already in place. What we're proposing is that the city allocate about $3 million for site work and construction of the fire station. The fire station will look very similar to what we have on East 10th Street, on, you know, off of East 10th Street, that's Station 6, about 8,500 square foot building, and it's gonna be somewhere around about $275 per square foot, it'd be LEED certified. And it's gonna be somewhere around about two hundred seventy-five dollars per square foot, it'd be LEED certified. Also, in order to open that, build that station and have it in place for twenty-four hours a day, we would need to put, bring on additional nine hun- nine hundred, nine firefighters at a cost of about four hun- five hundred and thirty-four thousand, bring your total cost to about three point five million dollars. That does not include furnishing the station, which would take another about fifty thousand dollars to be able to do that. So real small number there, three point five, any questions?
How are we gonna pay for it?
We'll tell you that again.
So that was part of this, most of this presentation is kinda get you prepared for that, and I think that there's gonna be some discussions in January and maybe some Christmas donations that we maybe can get there. So that's, that's the highest priority, but I want, I want to show you all something else as well that we need to be keeping on our radar. So we're gonna go and move to the next area, we're gonna talk about Station Eight. So we talked about Station Seven, Fire Child Road, we'll talk about Station Eight. And this comes out of the same methodology that we used, same analysis. So right now Station Five is off of Rollins Drive, right here, Green Boulevard, right near Front Gate Drive. And so this is the five mile travel, I keep saying five miles, there's no clarifying point. Four minute travel time, this is what it's showing. As I said before, kind of disregard this over there at Station Three. This area right here is where we're gonna be concentrating on, and mainly this area right here that's off of Frog Level Road. So this area is popped up as being one of those areas of concern. However, because it's a long ways away, what has happened is the calls for service is not as high. We only having about, we've had about a twenty-two percent, twenty-two percent increase over the last year. We've had about two hundred and fifty calls in that area, most of those being EMS, but it is outside of that four minute travel time. So this is the area we've proposed to be stationed in. And that's Frog Level Road, Davenport Farm would be sort of the middle, kinda crossroads there. And as you know, I'm showing another slide, you have the Southwest Bypass coming right over here. Now there have been some discussion about Front Gate Drive in this particular area. A cut through Front Gate Drive right here, right across from the fire station. That would help the travel times in this general area, but it will not address this area out off of Frog Level Road. Most of it right now is residential. I think that you have a public hearing tomorrow that's gonna talk about some commercial in that general area. So commercial is probably gonna be coming there, and that's the reason why it popped up. There's a lot of space out here that you can have some commercial and residential growth for the city. And as you all may know, this is, all of this area is in the future growth area for the city of Greenville and not Winneville.
And as I recall, I'm thinking the plan as you all estimated is gonna be about twenty-five thousand, almost?
Yeah, the density could have about twenty-eight thousand people out in this area between Dickinson Avenue, Frog Level, down to the Four Lines. But, but built up just based on land densities that would be permitted, and that could be anywhere from analytics.
There's a definite like period of time, but that's just a projection for the future.
Where's the corridor for the two sixty-four?
I'm gonna pop it up here in this next slide, any other, go ahead.
Yeah, but right before you do, it was eight hundred and forty-seven calls in Station Seven, the potential Station Seven area. So for Station Eight, do we have it accounted?
It's been eight hundred and forty-seven for the past year in Station Seven, right in this area has been about two hundred and fifty. And the reason why we didn't put the dot out here because it would be so spread out. It wouldn't, you wouldn't see the concentration, but it's about two hundred and fifty, we checked that early before we came over. And that's been about a two, twenty-two percent increase from the prior year. The response time to this area is bad. It was a good time for a joke, Ms. Rose, but right here is part of what's causing that. You can see Station Five has a long travel time and it's, it, that's caused, that's some of that caused. The travel network to this area. The travel network to this area is so bad, that's, I'm sorry, that's the reason why I brought up Front Gate Drive. The manager had asked, would that help us? We did that analysis, it will help in some areas. But because you have to come all the way down Green Boulevard to go down Frog Level Road, you just don't have the travel network to get there in a quick period of time. So it, it's not optimal, and we want to try to improve that in the future. Right now though, I'm gonna show you something in another couple of slides, how we've been addressing some of that. Yes?
Did you show them sort of where the front gate, how that you can cut through?
Yeah, if, if you, if Front Gate Drive was cut through, it would come here to Thomas Langston. I'm not for sure if the developer wants to line up with Sterling Point, but it would come right in this area, drop right down in, in here somewhere. There's been some discussion about commercial development over off of the, in the Front Gate and between Thomas Langston, and that's how that kind of came up a couple of times.
Do you estimate of how, how much time that would take off?
What we saw, Councilman Condon, we, we saw where we could actually have the four minute travel time in this general area. But it didn't affect this area. It's the same thing, the travel network just is not there, you don't have nothing but two lane roads, it's just not developed yet. So it's, we, we thought that would help a lot here, but it didn't. It stopped right along this area, right, probably right about where Davenport, Thomas Langston comes out to Davenport Farm, stopped right in that general area.
When you take, when you get a call for, you know, Frog Level area out there, do you traditionally go down Memorial or do you go towards Dickinson Avenue and then cut back?
Dickinson Avenue to Frog Level is the quickest, for, for down in this area. Well, right now how we're handling that, we're using automatic aid, mutual aid, and we'll talk a little bit about that later on. But that only really helps you with fire calls. Cause we don't have mutual aid and automatic aid for EMS, there's no EMS units in this area, but we'll talk about that in just a second. Alright, so you wanted to show the Southwest Bypass, two sixty-four, Councilman Smiley had asked about. And you see that some of those interchanges are gonna be within the city's growth area. So if we go back and look at Stations Eight and you put a station in the general area of Davenport Farm and Frog Level Road, four minute travel time, it will be covered. And you would be closer to the Southwest Bypass interchanges that you probably gonna have some commercial and industrial growth in that area. We know we're gonna have residential, lots of space for that, as Assistant Manager Flood said. But also if you look back over this way, with some of those areas that was having a little bit of a challenge for Station Five going down Memorial to Thomas Langston, it's gonna help with some of that. So that, that's the second sort of priority. It's down the road a little bit, but we need to be looking at it now and how we sort of make our planning to put a station out that way. Now, the thing is, this, this slide basically says, there's some land available, we basically would do the same type of station. It has both commercial and residential land out there right now, it may take some rezoning. But what we need to be thinking about is purchasing land early because this area is growing. It's growing to a point that if we don't get the land early, we may be in a, in a situation where it'd be difficult to get it later on. So one of the things that's, I'm sorry, do y'all have any question about Station Eight? Okay, so one of the things we're doing right now is we have automatic aids with Red Oak Fire Department. Red Oak, and let me jump to this map real quick, this is a busy map, so, here you guys. Red Oak is, this is the area right here, all the tannin, all the tannin area. And they're, they're up here off of, where are we at? Right, right over here. They're up here at the top of Frog Level Road. So the area we're talking about is down right in here. So they can come right down. But Red Oak is basically a volunteer department, they do staff, right now sometimes one person or, or in, in some cases, two people per day. And they help us, we have a good relationship with us, we have automatic aid, they go out on fire calls. So if we get a fire call in that general area of Station Eight, they automatically go. But their challenge with the personnel, especially during the day, there's just not a lot of volunteers left. So we still have to send the same complement of people out there in order to do an effective job. We worked very well together two weeks ago on a structural fire out in that area, and they were first on scene and helped us to bring that under control quickly. What we see though, and we've already started talking about some future collaborations and how we can grow that relationship. And I think that relationship is gonna be very important for them for two reasons. The Southwest Bypass area and all of that growth is gonna cause them to basically not have a, a response area in that particular area. However, because the way the county has divided up the fire districts, if you look at the forty-three North area out near McGregor Downs Road, a lot of the unincorporated areas fall under Red Oak Fire Department. And it's a very long travel time for them. And so we're already helping them from an automatic aid agreement out in that area. So the relationship is there. What we hope to see is a stronger relationship where we collaborate with both fire and EMS. And I think that there are some opportunities with the type of vehicles that we're bringing into the city, the combination fire truck, ambulance. We can maybe work with them to do some of that and maybe even help, maybe, maybe at some point staffing and resources that, that relationship gets stronger because in the coming years, that's, that area is gonna have to be staffed by somebody and, and they just won't have the volunteers nor the response district in order to make the station effective.
What type of training do they have? Is it similar to what we have as far as training?
It's, it's similar in some cases with the firefighters because a lot of their firefighters are our staff doing it on their days off, they live in this, in, in that general area, but they don't require the same level of, of, I'll say certification. They, they've got the basic certification, they don't go all the way to the advanced level. Most of them don't, they don't provide the paramedic level service. They do have some first responders that do EMT service, they're one of the few volunteer departments that do that in the county. So they are sort of doing what you call first responding on EMS, but not for the city. But those, that's another, those areas we could probably work stronger together.
Is there something that we can do to, you know, potentially for a short, short term fix and where we could possibly work with them with helping with the training? Cause we've got a lot more resources than they do. Well, that's what I'm saying, invite them and allow them to come and train with us?
Well, we do that now, we, we encourage them to come out, we actually are required through the automatic aid to at least do two trainings per year. They actually have already participated with us this past year. But the, the, the issue they run into is having the available personnel that can do the training, especially during the day, and also respond during the day. So it's, it, it's challenging. All these volunteer fire departments are getting challenged with the number of volunteers. The demand for training, the demand for service is growing, it's not the rural areas like it used to be. The calls are getting more complex, and so it, it's difficult for them. But I believe that building a colla- building a stronger relationship and working towards maybe a consolidation somewhere in the future is the best route for the city and this particular department. Go ahead.
So the possibility of a collaboration, could we possibly collaborate to purchase that area, that station?
You could, I showed you this station because you can't, it's not built, well, it's not built to city standards, LEED certified, but it also doesn't have the area to house personnel twenty-four hours a day. That, that large number of personnel that it would take way into the future when you put a full complement of firefighters and EMS personnel.
What I'm saying, the land?
The land is not in the most optimal place because if you, if you go to the map right here, they're way up here at the top, you really need to be down in this area. This map don't do justice as to how far that is. But because your travel network is so difficult, you only have one road. So if you have an accident that occurs here and then another call comes in down, it's, it's gonna be just difficult. The, the, and the other thing is, as a city gr- well, this is a better map to show where they're at. Their, their station is up here. So the city really needs to be looking around in this area right here, so they can go that way, that way, that way, that way. You have South Central School down in here. So if you're way up here, you're sort of at the tip of your responsibility, you wouldn't maximize your travel distance if you just bought that station out. Yeah, you, 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 the city should be very mindful of these interchanges and what they're gonna do to the resource needs out here.
So it says Section Eight, exactly where might that be?
We're, we're thinking we need to be somewhere right at this intersection in, in general. And that's Frog Level Road and Davenport Farm. Somewhere near that intersection, it's gonna give you the best travel network to make sure you have that four minute travel time. That is all I have for this presentation, do you all have questions?
Any questions?
What is the EMS revenue done in the last four, five years and has it grown roughly in accordance with those numbers he's given us?
It's stayed anywhere between three million, three point five, depending on what the cost, what settlement is. It's, I would say that this year we will probably end up around three point one, three point two, which is basically where we budgeted at.
I mean, but the biggest, three years ago, four years ago, if you were, we're looking at that number?
No, I don't think you're seeing much deviation from that.
Really? So even though we get?
We've had up years and we've had down years, but overall it averages out to be.
Even with this twenty, thirty percent growth rate that he's seeing?
Yeah, I think, I think so, the last three, four years.
I think some of that may be caused by, because the federal government periodically goes back in and, and, and sort of tinkers with the reimbursements. And sometimes they don't pay back as much as, over time as they did initially.
And we still have cost reports from five years ago that still have not been settled yet. So that, at this point in time, I mean, they don't, we didn't submit the cost reports, but and they've been discussed, there's been no final settlements on the cost. So we might receive some additional reimbursement down the line, but I mean.
Who handles the collections for us?
We, we do that in turn.
Have we ever thought of outsourcing that?
Yeah, we're, we're.
Somebody a little more aggressive, we've got them from five years ago?
We're, we're discussing various different strategies.
We, we constantly looking at what those reimbursements are, but what I will tell you all is that the city's reimbursement rate is much higher than the national rate. Matter of fact, we're somewhere around sixty-one to sixty-three percent, the national rate's around fifty percent. And mainly because of what you just said. City has dedicated staff that is more aggressive than the other staff, they do volume. And if they can't get the volume, they have to move on, so the city staff is constantly trying to go back. But I, but with, whether we do it privatizing or not, the reimbursements are changing at the national level and we, we're constantly trying to monitor that. Especially with this, this political environment, we gotta figure out what's gonna happen with the account, the Affordable Care Act and what that does to reimbursements, cause that will affect them.
I appreciate you looking ahead for us. It, it looks like what you're, what you're gonna do in the budget is, is, presentation is, shows how the options for Building Seven and then buying property for Eight. And Eight, maybe you said this, if you did, I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get it, but how far out are we looking to Eight?
I don't know. How far, how many years?
How many years out are we looking to build Eight?
Well, the collaboration needs to probably go ahead and start right away, but you're talking probably three to four years, but that really.
Years to build number Eight?
Yeah, it really depends, it really depends on the Southwest Bypass and what happens with that growth. And so if you start, if we start seeing that we're gonna have a lot of residential growth, we really need to start getting concerned. The commercial's gonna ask for it. Mainly because their insurance rates will be much higher if you don't have a fire, a fire station within five miles of that particular area. Their insurance rate will be greater out at the Southwest Bypass area.
That's, that's what I wanted to know, I, I was thinking.
Maybe we'll say three to five or so, just stretch it out a little.
Even on Station Seven, we're talking two years from now.
How many, how many employees would you need, I guess, to house Station Eight? I know you said that you needed potentially nine for Station Seven. How many, how many would you anticipate? Cause I know you, you know, the number of calls that we have right now is maybe a third of what Station Seven would require, but I know that it's gonna grow as. but I know that it's gonna grow as the growth happens out in that location. How many, how many employees would you estimate that you would need?
It depends on how you wanna staff. If you wanna staff twenty-four hours, seven days a week, you really need twelve employees, and, and it takes basically three per day. And that's to do just one unit. Uh, so the, the reason why you need the twelve is because of the vacancy factor. So they basically say it takes one point four firefighters, and that point four is the vacancy factor, and we know that you can't get a point four. So, uh, you can do three per day with the combination unit. This particular area, you could look at, it's on what of a peak time staffing, where you have the staffing, uh, on a different schedule than what a typical firefighter works. Uh, that's probably not a bad thing to think about going early into it. But when you start seeing your calls for service rise, you need to start thinking about growing it, and to maximum build out for a single unit is twelve people.
So with Station Seven, you're estimating that you would have nine there. Are you going, do we have three additional employees that are on staff right now that can? Yeah, how's that unit to be a, a fully operational unit?
Yes.
Okay.
We purchased this, an additional truck, and we already.
We, we got three in this year's budget.
For personnel, we've gotten up personnel too.
Yes, you put three in this budget.
Three of the twelve.
Well, we, we purchased, purchased a unit. It's coming in January or February, and we've got three personnel in the budget that's actually gonna come on board in, uh, January. It'll take a little while for them to get trained. What we're trying to do is be prepared in case we have to do, you know, some type of different deployment.
Of the three that we're gonna have that are gonna be coming in, are those based off of one of those grants that we received? The, the grant lasts for a certain amount of years, and then we have to take over the full, uh, salary and benefits for those employees?
They, those three are not, but we have talked with the Ferguson Group to make, to keep us aware and informed when the SAFRA grant comes out, and that's the FEMA Grant Full Personnel. That's not out yet. Uh, what I can tell you is that, that's typically designed for firefighters, and we have a challenge in this city because we do fire and EMS. But we have been successful in the past getting a SAFRA grant, and I would say that could be a potential option for funding personnel if we were awarded.
And for nine firefighters, are whatever we start to staff up for, who would try to get a SAFRA?
Where are we at right now with vacancy at the fire and rescue? Do we have a lot of vacancy there?
We've got thirteen vacancies, but we also have, uh, almost, I think, seventeen job offers we're gonna make. We do sometimes do, uh, overstaff because of retirements, um, and, and attrition. So right now, we got, uh, thirteen vacancies.
So are you, are you basing the, the nine additional personnel based off of us being fully, fully employed, I guess, or?
Fully staffed, yeah.
Fully staffed. And the, uh, yeah, I guess that was the only thing I was asking. So, so even if we fill these thirteen vacancies, so are we understaffed right now with those thirteen vacancies?
We are.
We will. We're running overtime.
A lot of overtime?
Probably. And what we usually do is, um, we have, we have to put them through the academy, so that takes a number of months. And then we still have even more attrition as they're going through, and so that's why we're allowed to go ahead and staff over. But, um, it's difficult to keep a full complement, particularly when you have to come through the academy. They run the academy usually once a year.
Once a year. We're, we're forty-eight percent right now in budget for overtime. We're at forty-eight percent. But that's typical. Same thing we had last year. And what we do is we look at our staff and look at our deployment coming up into the, uh, the last portion of the year to make sure we don't go over budget. But that's, that's, that's typical with any fire, and as Ms. Barbara said, the police departments throughout the nation, uh, firefighters typically just don't stay thirty years anymore, and you have a lot of, of retirements that occur.
So the, the training time itself, what, what's the length of that?
About seven months, and that, and you come out as a fully trained firefighter and an EMT.
Yeah, gotta be overstaffed then.
Yeah.
A long time.
And we have a regular, I guess, group of, of people that apply for those positions to go through the training?
We do.
Is it just a steady stream of people coming through?
No, we do, uh, recruitment about once a year, what we're going, going through right now. Uh, and typically, we get about four hundred people interested, and we have to doing it down through testing and things of that nature, different assessments.
So that four hundred cut to like eighty?
Well, what?
But I'm, I'm just saying.
It, it does, uh, 'cause what you do is you have about four hundred that apply, and about two hundred actually take the test, and then that cuts it down even more, and it's about seven different assessments that you do.
And then some years, they've done like two hundred interviews and like, you know, a month's time or so.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot to apply, but there's so many different assessments. You have, uh, things like the psychological now are knocking a lot of people out, which they didn't do years ago, so it's, it's, it's difficult.
Are there any other efforts that we can make to, I guess, increase that number? Because I guess that's my concern, is that if we've got thirteen vacancies right now, and, you know, you wanna house a minimal nine, what, what efforts can we make to, I guess, entice more people to get involved in the training process or into the, uh, application process to become an EMT or fire rescue?
So it takes such a long time. Most people that's working, they can't just go to a, a typical fire academy, like they do the BLET for police. And what we're doing is, we've actually already, in the past, we've hired some part-time employees. But I recently talked with the manager about hiring some part-time employees that we actually transitioned to full-time, overtime. Instead of trying to make them have all of that academy experience, uh, we've had some, uh, some paramedics that come that want a job. So we could hire them as paramedics, and then actually just stretch out the training time and provide the firefighter training over a longer period of time. But they will already be contributing to the effects of the organization by providing the paramedic service. And so we, we just expanded the, the amount of time it takes to train, which would stop the overtime, 'cause they would feel a lot. We wouldn't better have them as a firefighter, but they could go on the EMS unit and provide, uh, paramedic services at a fire.
Which means the person who, um, is currently doing it as the EMS, since they're both certified, they can do what they need to do as a firefighter while this person's filling in for EMS. Could we possibly increase, instead of once a year, have at least twice a year?
We could. The, the issue is that we have to work with pick community college. They do all the training, and it doesn't cost us anything to do the actual training. It does cost for salary, so it's difficult for them to run two academies back to back. So we can work with them, but we've, we've, we've been in conversations that we can't do it like we used to. It's just not working anymore. We have attrition rates that are staying steady around the, about twelve percent, which is really right there around the national average, and we can't do that. So we're looking at various ways of hiring people in different stages so that we can try to keep that number down and therefore decrease overtime.
And part of this too is hoping that, um, we can continue to have, um, better diversity in the department too in terms of, yeah, we attract women who can overcome our difficulties in service too. Because, uh, like, like you're saying, you know, most people can't just quit a job and be out six, eight months waiting, you know, going through training to, to try to get a job.
So, but would this be treated like we're doing with the police officers now, where they can be hired as they're going through the academy?
Um, pro, uh, possibly so.
And that, that's, that's how, sort of what we're doing. They, they're doing a little bit different, because they don't run the academies in the same fashion that we do. But yeah, we can look at some of the, those type things, and we, we, we're doing that this time. We have, uh, we have, of the seventeen, we've got about, uh, nine minorities, and five of those are women, which is unheard of for, for us to have that opportunity. I don't know if we'll get them hired, uh, but they're very close to being able to be hired. But there are additional, uh, diverse groups out there that we will be able to hire in, in a different manner. We, we have to, the, the application process for a firefighter is about six months. So we've gotta cut some of that time down to have more people available to come in, in a shorter period of time. But not cutting the training short, but just doing the hiring process in a different way, utilizing the current skills and then building upon those with what we need them to be a full, uh, firefighter and, and, uh, EMT.
And, and remember, when we started talking about vacancy, we built the four percent vacancy rate into the budget, and on a budget, personnel budget of twelve, one point five million dollars, four percent roughly equals five hundred thousand, which is almost equivalent to the nine positions that would, it would take in order to staff a, a, a new, a new station. So I mean, there's a, you gotta take that into consideration.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. So the remaining of the information will come in the planning session too.
Planning session, we plan to give you all, you know, the standard financial updates, your financial plans, and then talk about CIP. And, um, and kind of look at the wish lists and how much money is available, how you can, um, take, you know, the gap as it rolls off, keep rolling it, and, you know, and see if we can start figuring out how you plan, plan for the future.
All right, motion for John. Just be moving properly second, all in favor. Please sit up.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. All right. Motion for John.
Thank you.